Hello everyone, good afternoon all of you. Asha kori tumrah sobai bhalo acho. Abi aaste porabochche goals of economic planning. Of from economic subject. Economic planning jinishtakii, shota amra bujeshi. Ekhon amra porbo goals of economic planning, ortha objectives of economic planning. Egi jis. Economic planning in India relied on achieving the following four long-term interdependent and high-energized goals. Economic planning, planning it, charta goal acha, ortha charta objective chureche. Pothom objective ta acha, economy growth and development. Unlike growth which is purely quantitative in its focus. Growth acha purely quantitative in focus. Suppose two unit, two unitettheke four unit, four unitettheke six unit, six unitettheke ten unit. Bhoja galo, it acha quantitative focus. Al quality focus kirokom, amarka sektabha bhalo pencil acha. Iti pensilta bhanga, ekhiktiye. Ebar am, amen aar ekto bhalo pencil nebu. Ee daththeke. Hehehe. Giral rup. Kalartao sundod thakbe, ekta attractive view thakbe. Ebon, ebon long lasting hobe. It acha quality view. Sutaran, unlike growth which is purely quantitative, growth of purely quantitative. Iti economic development acha both qualitative and quantitative in nature. Qualitative ki, quantitative ki, dupey amra bujlam. Ebar acha from the planners perspective, economic development happens due to the sustained concerted actions of policymakers and communities that promote the standard of living and economic health of a specific area. Planner set perspective theke, jodi amra dekhi, planner se udesho ki, ki hobe? Jate emon ekta economic planning, emon ekta, emon bhabe ekonomita plan koraa, jate korae ekta thon. Ekto overall economic development hai. Economic development ki horte? Jate standard of living, manusher jay standard of living. Aajke manusher kache, manusher kache khawa poran moto shudub, ortho ache. Akam ek din, ek din, ek din, ek din. E standard of living takai jate bhaango jae, manushu ro khawa poran upuri besa thakbe, manusher kache karin thakbe, badiin thakbe. Ar, ar standard of livingta aar ekto hi yobe. Jai, jai higher ki, kitha jodi higher kiel orderre, jodi amra medhar kore thakki standard of livingta ke. Standard of livingta aar ekto higher kiel orderre, ekto upper position e thakbe. It acha ekta economister perspective, ekta economic planner, ekonomist, johon planning korbe, ekta economist. Tohon ere kom bhabe planning korbe. Ar economic health of a specific area. Economics, he, health jinishtakii? Manusher, human health to suneshi. Economic health jinishtakii tumrah prashno koru, amarka jutthora ache. Economic health acha, jate manusher purchasing power parity thaki. Purchasing power parity, ortha manusher kro ekhom hota. Manusher par capital income, sheta jodi vritthi korajaaye, taula ekti rastre national income, kimbha GDP vritthi korajaabe. It acha economic health, economic health kyo vritthi kotha hobe? Itao economister ekta planning ermodi pori. The scope of economic development for Indian planners therefore included all the processes and policies by which a nation advances economically, politically and socially. Emon bhabe economics, economist ke plan kotha be, jate. Tahan, jate korae. Nation, ekti rastro, economic eleo jate develop kotha bare. Politically u, jate develop kotha bare, emon ki, socially u, jate develop kotha bare. Kono dangga, hangama, kishu hobe na. It acha socially develop koraa, political ekta, ekta cha. Poli, political. Health, jitake amra buli, economic health jero may political health, health to shere komache. Mera political scienceer basa. Amra jao, amra johon constitution porbo, tohon amra political healther gota porbo. Political, health to jajajajajate bhalo hoy, economic health to jate bhalo hoy, social health to jate bhalo hoy. Shedi ekta economister target thakbe. Modernization, second objective acha modernization. It is associated with improvement in technology and process of production. It is driven by transfer of technology. Indigenization, innovation and research and development. A modern economy generate more value than a backward economy. Ekta modernized economy, shoshmae backward economy teke more values generate kotha bare. It is associated, it acha modernization. Modernization itteke, amader ekono ekta plannerer jokta thakbe shoshmae. Te, te, modernization ki orte? For example, technology ki improve kotha hobe. Amad ekhase bhotmane, jai, jai, technology, jai, jai camera, camera ka technology, technology takai jodi aar me aar ek improve korajaaye. Sh, 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 shedi gelak korak, tave process of production. Production takai jate output takai jale, jale ekto bhaango jae, factory production, industrial output, sab kishu output. Sh, output takai jate, edukation output, shikhar output, political output, social output, sab kishu output. Sh outputta, total outputta jate bhaango jae, sheta ardeko. Focus thakhte hobe. Ee sab kishu dike, jodi focus rakha jae, overall, ekta holistic approach jodi nawajae, taula shesite acha modernization. Ar, 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 kiti dike modernization kotha be? Indigenization. Byerettheke, byeret. Esir upor, byerer kono country upor, dependency komate hobe. Ami shudub byerer country upori, ami dependhayaasi, sheta jorule hobe na. Jotobeshi indigenization hobe, nicheer country, ortha nicheer country upor jotobeshi ami dependent hobo. Totobeshi amader national income barbe. Byerer country upor dependent holi, amader incomes ob byerer countryte berige chole jabe, output hobe besi flow kom. Bhoja galo, it acha indigenization. Itao modernization er moddi aache actually, innovation. Nuthon, nuthon ki, ki bhabe, ki, ki poddo dithe, ki technologythe, aar, aar, aar innovation korajaaye, nuthon, nuthon. Nuthon, nuthon jinis, ki kor abhiskar korajaaye, besi keni bolte galo, nuthon jinis. Jitaa, akam, ake, kokonam manusher. Ok, d, 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 dakhini, kimbha kane shone ni, kimbha experience koreni, emon ekta jinis abhiskar kotha hobe. Emon ekta jinis abhiskar kotha be, jita aar kon, kon din manush sokeh dakhini, kane shone ni, hat biye chuye dakhini. Emon ekta jinis abhiskar ki kor, ki kor ekora jae. Jate korae human health bhalo hoy, manusher shashto bhalo hoy, jatharajak emon ekta medicine abhiskar koraa galo. Jita jada rak cancer ke nirbul korajaaye. Cancer ni nirbul koraja, taula shesutta jodi amra byer e bhihki kotha bare, byerer deshe, taula amader. Flow hobe besi, byerer countryteke aajbe taka. Ekhon to amader countryteke taka byer e jatsche. Sheshi shoshmae byerer countryteke taka bha, bha, bharote aajbe. Eesutta jodi amra bazaar e, amra jodi international market e esutta jodi bhihki kotha bare. Bhoja galo? It acha vebath. Ar ekta acha research and development, research and developmentta ki unnoti kotha hobe? Jotobeshi research hobe, jotobeshi development hobe. Hobe, tot ekta countryer GDP barbe. Tot technology upgrade hobe, tot nuthon, nuthon jinis research abhiskar hobe. Sejono research and development uporo focus rakhte hobe. A modernized economy generates more value than a backward economy. Modernization brings with it a host of political and social changes. A host of political and social changes. Khushatso. Social changes, modernization esashe satejate aane, a, ase. Political change haujbe, social change haujbe. Political change kirokom? Political change dhara zak, ekjon, rajnautik netar kache. Gadi ache, thik ache. Ekta kon dami gadi ache, she kon daming gadi chaliye, av, offices jae. Kintu, por kache jodi ekta bhalo, kon, kon, kon daming gadi te. Huial khoro jae besi, shoshmae alake, ghar, ghar korae aava jae, sab kishu, sab kishu acha, acha, overall acha, asubida ruheche. Ekhon jodi ok, emon ekta gadi daava jae, jira kina, jira diye manush, ta, ta, ipo, office ipo kushte barbe. Sh, sheta hola, bhalo hoy. Ar, ar ekta example amirichhi. Dhala zak, akar labor strike, thik ache, labor strike sada no to kenoy? Johon guribder, johon akar labor, gurib laborder, pade. Athimare industrialist company. Ki hobe, athimara, ortha teje orte, johon, johon, jhon, jhon, ekta companyte, choli jon labor kajkoto. Emon ekta, hota, temon ekta technology abhiskar hoi, jadar choli jon employee mode, kuri jon employeeke chhatai kotha hobe. It acha kuri jon employee, taula shudub, shudub. Athi khelo, company kajstege, to kon, donkachilona, kuri jon employee, utte bare, kuri jon employee, kobe efficient employee. Tar, kuri jon employee, jada, jada chhatai ko, jada, jada terke company chhatai kurese, ora, ora kobe efficient employee. Don, ora, ora kobe, ekta efficiency thakal shottu, ora chhatai holo. Ita shudub, shudub holo, sutaran, kuri jon employeeer, employeeje chhatai holo. Er, er mashulto companyke dite, dite acha. Fire strikes. Employeeta strike koteche, protest koteche. Company, company against, case koteche, high court. Eegulov company, companyke, egulak ekta cost, jira kina companyke BR kotha hote. Sutaran. It acha. Political, ekta political ebon social changes thakhte hobe. A modernized economy can be expected to be more efficient in utilization of its resources. Thik ache? Tab or acha third point acha self reliance. It means relying on resources of the country rather than depending on the other country. It, jitani bullam, self reliant hote hobe. Unno de, de, sherupor dependent hobe takle hobe na. Ortha indigenization, self reliant hote hobe. Amar countryte, ami jinis produce kobo, amar countryte, labor kajkorebe, byerettheke ami labor anbo na. Amader darfalo jita hobe, amader de, sh, GDP barbe. GDP barbe in the sense, amader laborder, amra salary nichhi, amader labora bhalo korre kajkoteche, bhalo korre kajkore, productivity barache, amar profit barache company. Company salary u nichhe besi, overall GDP bache jada, 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 jale. It acha self reliance. This goal was partly due to the negative colonial experiences that lead to drain of wealth and, and, po, punishment. Amader, ekta negative colonial experience ruheche, acha ame ekta tumader kache ekta prashno gutha jai. Negative colonial experience, amar, amadet tolive ruheche, amar, amadere, amra export huiji, British arts der darah, kolonial eraate. Kolonial eraate, 19th centuryte, amra, amra export huiji, British arts der darah, fire drain of wealth. British arts ra, amader de, shetake, build niye. Ude, de, 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 shenie, industrialization kurese, jada, jada, jala, amader de, sh, industrialize thay gejase, ar ude, de, de, sh, industrialization. Ude, de, sh, kuchur kalkar khana gurutache, ar amader de, sh, jara, kalkar khana kumehsche. Itato amra poreshi aager classe. Asha shottipatha boltegi, ekhon ok amra ki, British arts der upor ki, dependency ki, dekhe chole si. I prashoda, kintu ekta prashno. Amader, amra ki ekhon dependent on British arts? Utthata hobe hai. Directly, amra ekhon kintu, Britainer jinis pashundo kuri, American products, amra ekhon pashundo kuri. Ekta American biscuit, amra, amra khete jodi, jotota bhalo basi. Ita songke amader brand personality jotota jure aches. Ita sheshe, 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 turona, ekta Indian goods, ekta Indian, ha, ha, bakeri product. Bakeri, product ki amra dukchai kuri. Bakeri product, amra khete, khete bhalo bha, ekibari bhalo basiya. Bakeri product, Indian goods. American je product, American goods, American, era, labora bha, bha, baniyese, Indianra bha nae. Taula ki amra bolte bare, jae. Amra ekhon dependent oder upor. Ekhon drain, ekhon drain of wealth hoy chole se. Reki taula amra bolte bare? Oboshi bare. Sutaran. Amader ki self reliant hote hobe. Poro nirbhorata shoshmae. Drain of wealth dekhe ane, ebon, amader de, sherjai, GDP ruheche, sheshe, 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 GDP kyo devast kore. Jita sh, kokonoi kamonai. This goal was partly due to the negative colonial experience that led to drain of wealth and poor punishment. However, this goal was also framed with a perspective that growth is oriented to, leads to, and caused by development and poverty elevation. Amra johon, amader country self reliant hote barbe, hundred percent. Tahun kintu. Amader, esettheke, jep, poverty ruheche, am, poverty alleviation hobe, overall development hobe. GDP barbe, unemployment kumbbe, sab kishu possible hobe, johon amra kuri, kuri, hundred percent self reliant hote barbo. Self reliant country hote barbo. Thik ache, bhoja galo? Ebar acha fourth point, fourth objective, acha social justice. Taula ame ki, ki objective pullam, ekhon apodjonti, economic growth and development, modernization, third objective, self reliance, fourth objective, social justice. Social justice jinishtakii ekde, ekde, dekhe ni. The goal of social justice is generally the same as human development. Social justiceer jay goal, subject, kiro, ruheche, sheta equal to the human development. Human development amra poreshi, shoddiktheke, double up hota hobe, economic, politically, socially, shoddiktheke, johon amra, double upmenta hobe. Healther dikthe, health bhalo thakbe, education bhalo thakbe, shoddiktheke, overall double up, johon growth hobe, johon quantitative growth hobe, plus, quality growth hobe. Quality growth hobe, tohon sheta ke amra bolbo, development. This goal of social justice tau is, acha human development mentee actually. Ensuring social justice is one of the stated goals of the preamble to the constitution of India. preamble constitutione preamble, in, here. Social justiceer kothata ulle koraa ruheche. E social justice, amra constitutione preamble, amra porbo, agamidio. Does realization of the social economic goal of social justice is important to ensure that development reaches all. Developmentta jate, gurib dhoni nirbishe, shetakeer kache pujay, sheshe, sheshe, sheshti, amader social economic goal e thakbe. Eje realization of social economic goal, goal of social justice, ita important hobe, important, shartakata, t, 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 tahu ni thakbe. Tahu ni jay, double upmenter, human double upmenter kothata ami bullam, sheta johon gurib dhoni nirbishe, shobar kache pujhobi. Social justice can only happen when inequality is based on caste, gender, religion and region are reduced or eliminated. Social justice, tahu ni possible hobe, johon kina, amra inequalities, ekam, castein, vittiti, inequality, genderai, vittiti, inequality, regionai, vittiti. Equality, religionai, vittiti, inequality, raceai, vittiti, inequality, languageai, vittiti, inequality, shob, shob, karai, inequality, johon amra kumehanthe barbo. Kimbha eliminate kotha barbo, tahu ni overall human development possible hobe. Humajitma. Does the whole. Paradigms of economic planning was based on the premise of securing social justice at the individual and at the. Societal level. Social justice ta individual level hote hobe, ebon societal level hote hobe. Individual level holi hobe na, societal level, overall society level hote hobe. Bhoja galo, ebar acha history of economic planning in India. It acha charta goal, charta goal abaramna bolani. Economic growth and development, first goal, second goal, modernization. That means to modernize. Third goal, self reliance, to become self reliant. And fourth goal, social justice, ensuring social justice in India. Ebar acha, amra pullam, goals of economic planning hai galo, types of economic planning hai galo, economic definition amra pullam, ebar history of economic planning. History ita ki, ita, ita, iti achi, por bhumki, sab kishu ita ekta iti achi, potohumi thake, ita achi, potohumi ta ki? Am ita amra ekto harka kore, jog puli ni, de, de, dekhe ni. A number of efforts were made to formulate a plan of social economic development in the pre-independence era of India century. Twenty centuryte, number of, 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 efforts tori koraa hache, to formulate a plan of social economic development. Pre-independence era, Britisher, Britisher jamate re, amader jek, export kurese. Atech chhobe. Sheshe, 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 exploration teke, mokhata, muktibapabat jono, bhibhinni economist, bhibhinni, rajnauti, bhibhinni rokon bhabe, keshta kurese exploration ke arano. Sheshe, exploration ke arano, ekta imatru upay, it acha economic planning. Itata, tarau pulabdi ko, kore chile. Ei, ei, pulabdi folai, economic planning shottuta esche. India te economic planningta esche pothomba, the first blueprint of Indian planning was given by a popular civil engineer and ex divan of mysho, sir M Vishveshwara Visbo. Ex divan of mysho. Ex divan of mysho, unan nam acha, sir M Vishveshwara, Swara. T, ta, nijer boe, uni ekta boi likhe chilen, the plant economy of India, nine, ninety under thirty four. Boi likhe chilen, ninety under thirty four, sh, plant economy of India te, economic planning shomondhe, alachana koreshe. Economic planning shottuta uni, uni, boe modi pothom likhe chilen. Jia amader ekta economic plan dorka. He believes that growth rate achieved by industrialization will even be more than the rate of agriculture. Uni vishas kotha ni ta, i kothata, jae. Industrialization er madhame, jay growth rate achieved hobe, sheta shoshmae agriculture teke besi thakbe. Sutaran, jotobeshi amader countryte, industrialization hobe, industry stapon hobe, to jotobeshi amader countryte, growth thakbe, sheta besi hobe agriculture growth teke. Because industrial growth is maximum from agricultural growth. Basically, his idea of state planning emphasized on industrialization. Industrialization upor, ortha, industrialization upor. Unan main emphasis ta chilo, una justic, main emphasis chilo, in the industrialization. As he proposed a shift from agriculture to industry. As he proposed a shift from agriculture to industry, uni agriculture teke, industry de, shift khabar kotha, alachana koreshe, unar buhithe. And targeted to double the national income in one decade. Ita hola, bulheche, amader jay national income ache, sheshe, 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 ita ek dosoker moddei, increase kore jabe. Thik ache? Ebar acha planning commission, the planning commission shomonde amra ebarer porbo. The planning commission was made on the recommendation of the National Planning Committee's report of nineteen forty eight. Which states that the need for economic and social planning for the country as a whole. A planning commission, goton koraa hoeshe, on the recommendation of National Planning Committee's report. National Planning Committee's report nineteen forty nine er vittite, planning com, com, committee goton koraa hoeshe. Sh, planning. Upor, planning committee, planning commission goton koraa hoeshe. National Planning Committee's report of nineteen forty nine er vittite. Which states, jira kina, focus kurese, the need for economic and social planning er upor. Economic planning dorka, social planning dorka, for the country as a whole. Economic planning, planning kotha hobe, social planning kotha hobe, amader countryte. The planning commission, I must say, a permanent body of experts. Ekhen, a permanent body of experts thakbe, shorkari, ch, 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 kuri, jadi, jadi, chaki thake, permanent. Ura thake, apartment, bha, bha, acha, permanent body of experts. Experts, meaning things, dollar zap, university professor. Tamode shob, university professor, economist, jada, jada ache, daro thakben. Which came into existence in March nineteen fifty. Ita ultimately, reportta topes koraa chil, nineteen forty nine, ultimately sheta esche, goton hoeshe, nineteen fifty day. Throw a cabinet resolution, a cabinet resolution er madhame. The planning commission constitutes an extra constitutional and non-statutory body. Working under the overall guidance of the National Development Council, NDC. National Development Council under a, kajkorebe. The planning commission ta acha, amra sobai janii, ekta extra constitutional, ebon, ekta non-statutory body. Jitake ni, kajkore, overall guidance of the National Development Council. Overall, guidance, National Development Council, overall guidance er vittite, uta kajkore.